Buddy, I'm going to call us to order. It's a couple of minutes past seven. Because of the rescheduling of the parent-teacher conferences at the junior high, we're going to be hearing bells ring periodically up until eight o'clock, so just try to ignore that every six minutes. And because of the rescheduling, Amy is at her children's conference, so I'm just going to call the meeting to order and get us started. She'll take over when she's finished with that. So, welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming tonight. The first thing I want to say is we're being taped and we're live tonight on TV, so that's FYI. First item on the agenda is the annual Springtown elections are coming up. In Acton, we have three school committee seats that are going to be coming up for election. Diane's seat, and she's not here right now, so I'm not sure what her plan is. Diane?
Yeah.
Diane has just announced that she's not planning on running. Again, that's too bad, but thank you for all the years. Yes?
I believe Diane has already pulled reelection papers.
Okay. So Diane has pulled papers, and Dennis, your seat will be up.
Yeah, I'm not.
And Dennis is not planning on running.
That is correct.
Yeah, so thank you to you two. The last day to obtain nomination papers in Acton is February 2nd, and the last day to file those nomination papers with their signatures is February 6th. And the town election calendar is in our packet. Boxborough, the last day to file nomination papers is April 3rd. My seat is up this year, and I will not be seeking reelection. And our election calendar is also in the packet. So that concludes that item. Next on the agenda is public participation. If anybody in the public has anything that they would like to get up and talk about that is not on our agenda, now's the time to do so. I don't see anybody stepping forward, so we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number Four, which is the Recommended Budget from the Superintendent, and I'm going to hand that over to Bill.
Perfect timing.
Perfect timing.
Every six minutes I do something.
Yeah. Thank you very much, maybe I'll stop talking. Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Thank you. So, good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. My notes say that I'm going to provide a short update, but I think I'll just say I'm going to provide an update on FY19. There are a number of slides in the presentation. Many of them, though, are repeats from last month and have not changed, so not going to spend much time, if any, on those slides. My intention will be to highlight those aspects of the budget that have been adjusted, and there is, has been an adjustment since December. Additionally, in your packet, you'll find that there are line item details for expenditures, for revenues, along with character coding and administration responsibility summaries. So, those have been provided for you today so that you can, at your leisure, leading up to Budget Saturday, January 27th, have those documents to review. I'll also spend a few minutes reviewing the capital spending plan, and briefly, I'd like to talk about the concept of developing some protocols for future capital spending planning. We've been talking about this at Cabinet and School Leadership Team, and there are some ideas we have that we'd like to pursue around the creation of a short-term capital plan and developing some specific protocols that we'll use on an annual basis in developing our capital spending plan for that particular year. Mr. Vergolino will then spend a few minutes with the presentation looking at the historical aspects of assessments since regionalization, and then that will be followed by Kirsten Nelson, Steve Martin, and Aaron Betaz, who will present food service, athletics, and community education presentations. And then we'll wrap up the budget agenda tonight with some quick updates So I'd like to start by just reminding everyone of what is coming regarding future budget presentations. The next big activity is January 27th, Budget Saturday. That will be our third budget presentation. It will be a continuation of the work that's been ongoing. You will receive your detailed budget book. January 27th, we're at the end of next week, the 19th, which will give you that whole weekend and the following week to go through that voluminous notebook. At the conclusion of Budget Saturday, the School Committee will take a preliminary budget vote. And I anticipate that we will be presenting the information, and the information that you receive in your budget books next week will be what has been presented tonight in terms of the numbers, but I am anticipating that through that day, we may be talking about some adjustments. So more to come on that. And then on February 1st, we'll have an opportunity at that School Committee meeting to do some summaries and updates, if we need to, relative to the work that was done on Budget Saturday, and certainly update the Committee if there's any new information that has come forward at that time. One piece of information that will be new to us on Budget Saturday is information that we will be able to take from the Governor's FY19 Budget Proposal. So the Governor's House One budget is scheduled to be released on Wednesday of that week prior to Budget Saturday. So if there are major, if there's major changes in our assumed revenues, particularly Chapter 70, Chapter 71, the intention will be to bring that to your attention and have conversation about that on Saturday. The budget dates, as you well know, are governed by, in terms of the budget process, are governed by requirements as part of the regional agreement. So there does need to be a preliminary vote taken at Budget Saturday, and that follows the timeline outlined in the regional agreement. And then the final budget vote, again, following regional agreement timelines, is scheduled to be taken after the public hearing on the budget that will be held as part of the February 15th regularly-scheduled School Committee meeting. The budget guidelines have not changed, and we've gone through those before. The one thing that I would like to highlight is that a large component of the FY19 budget, which accounts for approximately, not quite 1% of the budget increase over last year, is the cost of single-tier busing. And that goes hand in hand with one of the major School Committee initiatives to change school start times for the beginning of next school year. Our budget assumptions on revenues have not changed. And again, you know, other than the community assessments, which have been impacted with our changes that we've made since the last month, we're holding firm on our assumptions around revenues, but we all understand that that's subject to change, perhaps depending on the Governor's budget. In terms of expenses, you know, they've been adjusted slightly, and I'll get into those details in just a second. The major shift that has been made in terms of expenses, I don't want to do that. Thank you, Mary. It has to do with the level of circuit breaker reimbursement we are going to use to offset the special education tuition cost. And again, we'll go into that in a little more detail. And then I just want to highlight that we'll be spending a little more time in detail on the capital spending plan. So the change in the budget reflects a reduction of a little more than $167,000. This reflects an increase over last year of a little more than $3.3 million or 3.8% over last year, and this is down from a 4% increase that you saw last month. In terms of the revenues, as I indicated before, the change in the revenues are the community assessments. So the assessment dollars, both to Acton and Boxborough, because of that $167,000 reduction, have changed. Acton's assessment has been reduced by almost $141,000, and Boxborough's assessment has been reduced by a little more than $26,500. In terms of the expenditures, so the major factor here is the... Oh, well. Yeah, it was working earlier. Anyway, the major change is in the special education, I'll take my glasses off. The special education contracted services expenditure line. That consists of cost of special education out of district placement, the tuition cost for those, and as well as other related contractual services for special education services. The change we've made is the expense line is being reduced by $150,000 because we're increasing our circuit breaker offset to cover that. The $6,960 in special education expenditures actually is the net amount, and I think everybody understands that. The total cost of tuition and other services that make up that line, a total $9,620,000. It's listed as a $6,960,000 cost because $2,660,000 will be used from circuit breaker reimbursement, and that's a direct offset. We currently have in our circuit breaker reimbursement account, we started the year with a beginning balance of a little more than $1.6 million, and that, and again, as you know, circuit breaker reimbursement follows, is based on a percentage of allowable costs from the preceding year. And the way circuit breaker reimbursement works, districts receive those dollars in the fiscal year following the calculation it's based on, and those dollars are used to reimburse, to offset the current year's cost of special education. Districts are allowed to carry over any unused circuit breaker reimbursement dollars in that circuit breaker reimbursement fund as long as the amount that's carried over to the next year is spent the following year. And that has been the process here for a few years. What that means, what the balance means, is that there have been some years where, for a variety of reasons, the tuition costs that were projected when the budget was passed did not meet that level. And/or, we could have, you could have a number of students in one year who either graduate, who are receiving students who either graduated or aged out, and because the money follows the year later, the full reimbursement amount allowable comes the following year. And if there are no other changes, all things considered being equal year to year, then you would expect to have a balance from the reimbursement. The bottom line is that the $1.6 million is a healthy amount. It represents about 50% of what our actual dollar reimbursement has been the last few years, and we expect that to continue for next year. So, we have been utilizing the circuit breaker funding in addition to the circuit breaker, the anticipated circuit breaker reimbursement amount. I'm getting way too technical here. But we anticipate that using the additional $150,000 will still leave us at the end of next year, next fiscal year, with a balance of about $1.2 million. So, we felt it was prudent to use additional funds. And then the remainder, the salary line has gone down by $18,860, and then there have been a couple of other offsets to those expense lines, but the net total is $167,523. You've seen this slide before. The salaries, overall salaries are increasing. The adjustment that we made, that we've just made actually reduces the percentage increase in the salaries. It's gone from 5.4 to 5.3, not significant, but important. Again, you've seen the salary components for FY19, the recommended FTE adjustments. We reviewed this in detail at the last meeting. Now, I just want to, again, go back to one of the larger increases in our budget, the single-tier busing. This is the cost. Busing is actually going up by $777,000. The single-tier piece costs approximately $750,000. We are offsetting that first-year cost by the $575,000 that is showing up there, and we expect a large amount of that will come back to the district in regional transportation reimbursement for FY20, to the tune of about $380,000, perhaps a little more. So, the full cost of the single-tier busing will be phased in, really, or at least the net cost, once full two years of reimbursement are realized, is being phased in over two years. If we were not proposing single-tier busing this year, we just wanted to show you what the current proposed budget status would look like for next year, and we would be at a 3% increase. So, I indicated earlier that the adjustment, the slight reduction, does impact the assessment. Here's the impact on the Acton and Boxborough assessments. The Acton assessment goes down by about 0.2% over where it was last month, and the Boxborough assessment is reduced by approximately 0.05% from where it was last month. So I want to talk a little bit about capital. You heard us last month tell you that year-over-year FY18 spending versus the proposed FY19 spending on capital is being increased or is proposed to be increased by a little less than $300,000. The capital spending over the last two years compared to what we're proposing for this year can be seen on this slide here. What I'd like you to do at this point is, in front of you at the table, you have a couple of documents called FY19 Recommended Capital. You have one that is two pages long. It's in landscape portrait mode. And then there's another one, which is all on a single page. You may need supervision to read that one, but it may be easier for some people to follow along. I think it might be helpful if you look at that. So this spreadsheet is color-coded, and what I'd like you to do is pay attention to two columns in particular. The column that is highlighted FY19 Request, and then two columns to the right of that, most of which is highlighted, the FY19 Recommended. So the FY19 Recommended column identifies those projects, those items, those pieces of equipment that, for FY19, at this point reflect what we believe is capital spending. Now, they're all color-coded, so I want to just quickly go through what the colors mean. So those items colored in yellow represent large projects and are related to the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan. Those projects highlighted in green, these are items that have traditionally been building and grounds, capital in terms of equipment replacement, machines, vehicles. Those have traditionally been funded in the operations and maintenance line items. So they've been outside that big capital line that has the big dollar amount. The same with those items identified in blue. This year, as in, JD can correct me if I'm wrong, but this year, as well as the number of the past previous years, these dollars have all been related to flooring replacement projects in the various buildings. So flooring replacement, replacing tile that is worn and has exceeded its useful life, or in a number of cases, replacing carpet that is worn, needs to be replaced, but replacing that carpet with tile. These items have been, these dollars have been funded in the preventive maintenance lines of the budget, again, as opposed to including in the big capital one-line number. And, you know, some might argue that depending on the size or scope of the project, perhaps these are preventive maintenance items. Given that, given the amount of money, in this case, it's a little more than, it's about $54,000, I believe that capital is the right designation. And what is still to be determined, the SLT will continue to review these flooring request priorities. A number of these projects have been done on a phase-in, so a few rooms in some schools each year. We're looking at what the current status in those buildings are, and it may be that we develop a three-year plan and perhaps use the bulk of that money to finish one school, all the projects still, the work still needed in one school, do the next school the next year, et cetera. That's still to be determined, though. Those highlighted in salmon, so these are all building-based items or projects that were submitted as part of our budget development process this year by building principals. They're listed by school. BB stands for building-based, and then each facility has its own designation, senior high, junior high, et cetera. In the past, including this year, leading up, going into our budget process, there's been really no dedicated funding source for these kinds of requests. I think it's fair to say, and I can be corrected, but periodically, in the last few years, if there were needs that were not directly related either to larger projects that had been identified in that large capital number, whether it was, you know, $273,714 over the last two years, some of these requested projects have been done using current-year funding that became available. So our goal was to go through a process this year looking at that $1 million kind of benchmark that had been set and to see if there was not a possibility to fund some of these building-based requests that, in most cases, I believe, are related to capital. In some cases, that can be debated, whether it's replacement of equipment and whether that should be a regular line item. We're still going to talk about that. So, and then last, in the fathers' column, the second to the last column, are requests that sometimes are considered capital, depending on where you are, what district you're in, but are all technology-related. And so those items that are highlighted will be funded, will be funded through the technology budget as part of our omnibus operations. Yes? Yeah, Diane?
Under Conant, it has asbestos removal. Is that deferred?
No, it's still, we're not sure the status of whether that will be necessary as part of some work we do in the main office. If it is, then the money that is budgeted for that would have to go to asbestos removal.
So that would be put on a higher priority.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yeah. So basically, what we did this year was we went through a process where the spreadsheet was developed. We identified all of the priority needs. A large number, approximately $885,000, is related to the Capital Improvement Plan for major projects, and then think are able to, under this plan, fund some of the projects in the buildings that historically, again, have been deferred. There just hasn't been a funding source for them. So, those are the items that make up what actually is not $1 million, but $1,124,500. That $124,500 is the total of monies that have been historically budgeted in the operations and maintenance lines, that $92,000 for the mower, the bobcat, and the floor machine, and the $32,500 in the preventive maintenance line for flooring. Now, you'll notice that in addition to the funds that JD highlighted in the preventive maintenance lines, principals did request, outside of that, additional funds for flooring replacement. That's why the total amount in flooring replacement is about $55,000. And that seems to us to be the right number to get much of that work done. So, again, for FY19, our approach was to put together this spreadsheet. It was reviewed by the SLT and the Cabinet on numerous occasions, and we're able to... It was reviewed by the SLT and the Cabinet on numerous occasions, and we're able to refine this to get to the proposal that is before you now. And of course, certainly entertain questions, but we will go into this again in more detail on Budget Saturday. One of the panels, the afternoon panel, one of the focus will be capital spending. So I just wanted to share with you, I'm not anticipating or expecting, frankly, any action on this. If you want to talk about it, that's great, but just some thoughts about the capital budget process. We've talked about it with SLT, and what I would recommend the district strongly consider, and I'm very willing to start this process off in the spring, but beginning with FY20, develop a separate annual planning development process for capital spending. Basically, what we believe that would look like is that there'd be an internal group that would work on developing a short-term, three- to five-year capital spending plan. We would work through the Budget Subcommittee. That would be the intention, unless there are other ideas, and that, and the school committee would ultimately approve, you know, this notion. Once that plan is developed, and I believe that we can start this plan and really be well on the way of developing a three- or five-year plan by the end of the school year, if we start that shortly after town meeting, the Acton Town Meeting at least, is over in April. But the idea is, once that three- or five-year plan is established, there are items in capital spending items that are identified according to priority in each of those five years. The important piece is that we know, even from year to year, new priorities are identified, and other priorities can change. You know, a leaking roof that in FY19, you know, we believe has two more years of life and needs to replace, be replaced in FY21, but we get to FY21 and it's still holding up, and we feel we can get another year out of it and push that back so that other priorities for that year could be funded. Having a short-range plan like that helps that process. So the way it would work is, once that short-term plan is established in the first year, it is reviewed annually. So once the most recent budget year has been passed, FY19, that goes off the books, and if you had a five-year plan, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, you would start working on updating and identifying priorities for FY24. The group would get together, starting in the spring, working over the summer if necessary, and sometime early September would bring to the Budget Subcommittee a draft plan for the next budget year. That would give the committee time to reprioritize, vet cost proposals and cost estimates, do some really more thorough work regarding that, and then the spending plan for the next fiscal year would be brought for approval, under this concept, to the full school committee in early October, just before the operating budget development process starts. So we would start the operating budget process, having already dealt with and identifying our capital needs. And I think the focus for AB, for the majority of that funding, certainly would be items that appear on the Capital Improvement Plan. The one piece that still has to be fleshed out, if you will, around capital, is that we have this $14 million plan. The hope was, I know when, in the last two years, as this, as that plan was developed, you know, there was a short-term approach or midterm approach, trying to get that work done in five to seven years. Well, $1 million a year, you know, will not accomplish that, obviously, but there has been a good start the last two years, or the last year, and certainly under this plan, with reducing that amount. But there needs to be further discussion on how to balance capital that's identified as part of the omnibus operating budget, and the ability to then address that full $14 million. You know, if you go out five or six years, there's approximately $6 million that comes off the $14 million. How do you then, in that same time period, go about creating a funding source to complete the other $14 million, the other $8 million remaining? So we'd like you to just kind of let that percolate and think about that concept in terms of capital spending. We'll be talking further about this with the Budget Subcommittee as we go forward over the next couple of months, and look forward to coming back to the full committee to discuss that further after the FY19 budget process is wrapped up. So that's my presentation. I'm glad I amended my notes from short to not short, so I apologize for that. At this point, Dave is going to make, talk to Table 6, the community assessments, and review the historical assessments with you.
While you transition.
Before we do that, sure.
So this is picky, but on the sheet you gave us, Item 14B, under Building-Based Senior High School, you have a yes there, but I don't see the $13,800 in any of the other columns. And you don't have to really answer that right now, but just something to look at. Either it becomes a no, or it moves over somewhere.
The, oh, the 13, 8.
Yeah, 13, 8 for the floor machine.
Yeah, you know, because that is actually being covered under the green Ops and Maintenance budget. That floor machine that's identified.
Yeah, it's the same one.
It's the same one.
Got it, beautiful. And I just want to say, I love the idea of the Capital Improvement Plan, a three- to four-year plan. I mean, we've been looking for this for some time, and I wholly endorse that.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Beth. The title that you see here is going to need to wait a couple of minutes. I'm going to walk you through the fiscal, the details of Fiscal 19s, Table 6, which you have on the table. It's the one with the color coding. Two pages, pink and yellow and purple on the front, and some other colors on Page 2. So you should be somewhat familiar with the layout of this. This is the, so this is the Table 6, representing the allocations based on the superintendent's preliminary budget recommendation. I reformatted a little bit from what was in, the template that was in, that was on my computer when I took over here. It helped my understanding to do a little bit of reformatting, and in addition, I put some notes on this to provide some reference and to provide some clarity, to make it understandable as a document, that you don't have to, for example, have the regional agreement next to you to decipher where things are coming from and going to. So just briefly, the numbers that are in the first page, they're based on the three-year average enrollments, K through 12 for most expenses and all revenues, 7 through 12 for selected expenses, and that's all per the regional agreement, as the notes indicate. The yellow-shaded amounts are taken directly from the budget, the details of which that you have, and the totals of 89, 398, 500, which represents a 3.8% increase from Fiscal 2018, is right about in the middle of the page. The rest of the yellow-shaded items are just there to indicate that they are taken from the detailed budget. As a result of the first page, we have a tentative assessment of the regional costs between Acton and Boxborough, and the purple-shaded numbers at the bottom say that if the allocation was done on an enrollment basis, Acton would pay 84.82%, and Boxborough would pay 15.18% of the district's costs. But that's not what happens because of Appendix A to the regional agreement, and that's where the second page of the analysis takes place. There shouldn't be any questions on the first page. I think that's pretty straightforward, and seeing none. So the second page is where the actual assessments are calculated. The blue-shaded amounts are directly out of numbers mentioned specifically in Appendix A. The base budget and the projected benefit from regionalization is right out of Appendix A, and the percentage of the benefit allocated to both towns, 60% Acton, 40% Boxborough, is the percentage that's attributable to FY19, the fifth year of regionalization. As a result of those calculations, the base, the allocation of the district's budget is in one of the orange numbers, and it's 84% Acton, 15, 84.11% Acton, 15.89% Boxborough. Does everybody see those? The numbers right below that were the numbers that were generated through an allocation based on enrollment, and the difference is fairly substantial when you talk about a budget of this size, a 71/100% shift from Acton to Boxborough, or in dollars, 500, about $514,000 from Acton to Boxborough. I'm going to talk in a minute about the relative implications of that, but for Fiscal 19, the difference between allocating the costs on a strictly enrollment basis to the manner in which it's described in Appendix A is $514,000. And as a result, giving credit for the elementary debt that both towns pay themselves through their own town appropriations, the resulting amounts are, as Bill had on one of the slides he just presented, $60,553 for Acton, $11,459,260 for Boxborough in the line with the green, the dark green shading in it, representing 4.89% increase to Acton and a 1.16% decrease for Boxborough. I say in Note E that in Fiscal 20 and 21, the method of reallocating the assessment will be replaced. It's going to go from a percentage basis to a fixed-dollar adjustment. In Fiscal 20, that amount will be $425,000, and then 25, just $25,000 in Fiscal 21. As a result, Fiscal 20 will be the first year that the relative enrollment between the two towns has a direct impact on the assessment, because it will be, Page 1 will be in play next year. Rather than going through the base budget and projected benefit calculations that you've done for the first five years of the regional agreement, the, wait for it, the, I've been waiting to say that, sorry. Those amounts will be reduced by a fixed-dollar amount, so there will be relevance to the allocation based on enrollment. Are there questions on the Fiscal 19, Table 6? Okay.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure I understand that Appendix A goes beyond the five years with the allocation, and it adds the next two years as a fixed-dollar amount.
That's correct.
That's in Appendix A?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, I forgot.
And I think there's language, too, that says thereafter, it's strictly based on enrollment. Okay? So the PowerPoint that's now on the screen, and I presented, I'm sorry.
You know, I mean, just to clarify for the community, if we were strictly by enrollment this year, what would our assessment have been?
The assessment to Acton would have been higher by, now I've lost the number, $514,000.
Just to be clear, because I think, I don't think the community necessarily understands, you know, the benefit that we've been getting for five years, right? We've been getting a great deal of benefit, but there will be a jump next year, but we haven't seen the jump for five years because of the way we did the regional agreement. You know, we start talking, we understand it because we've been sitting here, but it is gibberish, I think, to most people who are watching, and that really needs to be clear, is, I don't, you know, it's going to be a shame if people are really surprised next year and up in arms when we've been getting savings for the past five years because of the way the regional agreement's been, and once we move to strictly by enrollment, there is a, you know, besides our increase next year, there's going to be an increase because of that change.
So I just wanted to add to that. We're seeing the jump this year because of the difference in the allocation, is a dramatic different allocation, you know, the 60, 40, as opposed to the 80-something, 15, you know, something. So this year, I would say, this is, this is the jump, the first jump.
So that's a really appropriate segue into this PowerPoint, because this is my first year, and in Medway, I didn't have to deal with Table 6 or regional allocations, so there was a learning process for me to understand it, and being year five, it's really a watershed year because it's the last of the five that you're going to have this arbitrary use of a base budget and a projected benefit that gets allocated by a prescribed means to determine the live allocation of the assessment. And so I apologize to some if the material in here is at a 101 level. You may want to consider it a refresher. I think some of the analyses that are in here will be helpful and informative, and certainly, Deanne, along the lines of what you were alluding to by your comment. So it's, I think, in getting a handle on this myself, I constructed this under the thought that it's important to see the results of the first five years of regionalization relative to the assessments, and look at the impact on both towns for the first five years, and then what comes next. So enrollment drives the allocation of assessment conceptually. At the district, we have a registrar who compiles enrollment data, and she prepares an analysis that my office uses to prepare a three-year average of K through 12 students and a three-year rolling average of 7 through 12 students. Those are both used for different purposes. As I said before, the K through 12 average is used to allocate all revenues and most expenditures, except the ones that I'll mention in a minute, and E and D usage. The 7 through 12 average is the basis of allocating costs for elementary debt service prior to regionalization. There is one adjustment that's made, and that's a 5% shift for those costs favoring Boxborough. As I said before, this is largely an exercise in, for informational purposes only, through FY19, as I believe you know, because of Appendix A. And so if the regional assessment was based on the shares of enrollment by each town, this is, these are the amounts that would have been assessed. This is the allocation that would have been done for the last five years. This is the allocation that would have been done for the last five years. And you can see that, for the most part, attracts around an eighty-five fifteen split between Acton and Boxborough, but there's been a slight trend upward in enrollment favoring Acton, Acton students growing slightly higher than Boxborough. And I should say that, I heard, one of the comments made today was, there's been declines in enrollments. So what do you mean enrollments going up? Well, if both are going down, then as a district, it's going down, obviously, but if Acton's goes down less than Boxborough's, then the percentages will show a greater proportion remaining in Acton. So this is simply the split of students between the two towns attending the district, and as I said, you can see a slight upward trend through Fiscal Eighteen, statistically no, not much change through Fiscal Nineteen. And it's important because if this was the means of doing the assessment allocation, each tenth of a percent represents between sixty thousand at the beginning of this period and seventy-three thousand at the end of the period in dollars. Okay? So that's where we've been if the assessment was done based on enrollment. Extrapolating that further, so eighteen and nineteen are carried forward from the last slide. What we did was, we looked at projected enrollment for the next three years out. And what's interesting to see here is the trend that you saw in the last slide, where Acton had an increasing share of the total in the district, that's beginning to reverse and goes down pretty dramatically between two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and twenty-two. That's projected students, it's subject to change, but based on, based on that, the percentage between Acton and Boxborough is going to shift toward Boxborough in the years when it starts mattering, when the enrollment matters as far as creating the actual assessment. So Fiscal Twenty, as I said before, is the first year when the enrollment directly impacts assessment, and again, a tenth of a percent is between seventy and eighty thousand dollars over that period of time. That's, this is an important slide for discussion purposes, whether, it remains to be seen whether the actual enrollment is going to track these projections. Does everybody understand what I'm trying to accomplish here? Thank you. Until then, the projected benefit by town in Appendix A is what governs. And so for the first five years of regionalization, the Appendix A calculation supersedes cost allocation on an enrollment basis. What it appears to be doing is attempting to project the district's budgets and savings from pre-regionalization and set the allocation in some rational and systematic manner for the first five years. That's what it appears to me is what was happening. As a result, this projected benefit, which you've talked about a lot, no doubt for the last four years as well, you can see that for the first four years, it's been pretty steady in the eighties and as high as ninety percent of this projected benefit favoring Acton. That changes in Fiscal Two Thousand and Nineteen to a sixty forty split of the projected benefit, and that is a big change as far as what happens to the actual assessment. Acton's share of the expected savings increased to a maximum of ninety percent in Fiscal Seventeen, but in FY nineteen, it's set at sixty percent. And so as a result, what you can, what you see here is, the first column are the numbers I presented on a previous slide. That's the assessment allocation based on enrollment. The second column is the actual assessments based on Appendix A, or what actually got charged to the town of Acton. The first four years, there was a shift of approximately two percent annually in Acton's favor, meaning that Acton in two thousand and eighteen should have paid eighty-five percent based on its relative enrollment, but only paid eighty-three point two percent because of Appendix A. That changes dramatically in FY nineteen, and that shift is reduced to point seven of one percent. The complement of the Acton numbers is the Boxborough numbers, so all of these percentages add up to a hundred, so the spreads are the same. It's just that the shift goes, instead of going from, Boxborough is where the costs end up going to. And so Boxborough assumed about a two percent higher cost every year for the first four years, and that comes down to a point seven percent for Fiscal Nineteen. That's the percentages, but what about the dollars? So the dollar impact of using this projected benefit for the first five years was significant, over a million dollars a year for each of the first four years. There's a typo, I saw this this morning when I presented this, that FY sixteen should be two point one percent, not one point one percent. So it's about a two percent shift annually, amounting to over a million dollars annually between, from Acton to Boxborough. The shift goes down by over seven hundred thousand dollars from eighteen to nineteen, and in percentages from about two percent to point seven percent. Summarizing that, over a five-year period, in the aggregate, the cost shift will have been five point six million dollars from Acton to Boxborough. Put another way, for the first four years, the average shift was about a million three. The superintendent's recommended budgets say that shift should be five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for FY nineteen. It goes down to hard dollar amounts for Fiscal Twenty and Twenty-One. That's-
It's from Boxborough to Acton, though. The shift is from Boxborough to Acton.
The benefit, correct.
Yeah.
You could, right. I apologize for that. So going from an average of a million two down to five hundred and fourteen thousand is why you have a situation where the district's budget is recommended to go up by three point eight-eight percent. Four point eight-nine percent increase is what falls to Acton, and Boxborough has a decrease of one point one-six percent, because the shift has been so substantial in prior years that the lessening of that this year lets costs flow back, if you will, toward Acton, toward a more strict allocation based on enrollment. And so projections of student population aside, the things that will drive future assessments, these are things that you know about that would, for most school districts in general, would impact, and I don't need to read them. I'll point out a couple of things. Chapter Seventy in foundation budget, by this time next year, we could be talking about reform in how the state funds its foundation budget. We probably will not get much in the way of relief, that's my opinion, between now and then, but there could be, there could be reform on the horizon. It's been talked about for a long time. There's a constitutional amendment that will be on the ballot next November specifically to fund two things, education being one, and so there's a possibility that that could change districts, including AB. The new elementary school project is going to impact the budget overall, that's clear. Servicing special needs populations between special education, English language learners, the increasing number of low-income families and students is going to be, is going to have an impact, an increasing impact likely to the district's finances. And then whatever other initiatives come along will impact the assessment in the future. This was a live shot, so. If they're, if they're on, I'll not embarrass anybody by leaving it up there any longer than I have to. Questions? Okay, thank you.
My name is Kirsten Nelson. I'm the Food Services Director on behalf of the district, and just want to present to you this evening. Our mission is to serve high-quality nutritious lunches in comfortable, welcoming environment in all of our schools. And just to give you a brief overview, so we have seven onsite kitchens that are cooking. We serve hot lunches daily in all of our schools. Breakfast is currently being offered at the high school, the junior high, Conant, McCarthy Town, and Marion. We consider the lunch program to be an integral part of the school system. We feel that a well-fed child is ready to learn. We have very clean kitchens, hard-working staff, and we consider ourselves to be the busiest restaurant in town. We are the recipient of the Healthy U.S. School Challenge Award at all of our elementary schools. And I just want to talk a little bit about some of our new initiatives, breakfast being one of them. So we started in McCarthy Town and Marion last year. We started Conant this year, and we're looking to roll that out to all the other elementary schools by next fall. We also started an extended-day lunch program, so families that have students in extended day on half-day Thursdays can now preorder lunches for their children online and have them ready for them at school. We started a Boars Head Deli line at the junior high, and we now do all of our ordering through our point-of-sale system. We also have a mobile app now for all of our school lunch programs, so students, parents can access free and reduced lunch applications online now and see all their information. We are partnering with facilities and implementing a recycling and composting program. And then we also will have an overhaul of our food service website coming soon. This is just a picture of the Boars Head Deli at the high school. We have several other options, obviously, during the day, but this is pretty popular. The kids come through and they can choose what they want for deli meats, wraps, sandwiches, and then have all the different toppings. And then this is what we implemented at the junior high, so it's a little station that we've set out in front of the calf, so that the students can come out and get that. We do that as a special on Thursdays in addition to our lunches. It seems to be a hit. So some of our other services that we provide, we do catering for school events. We have monthly specials that we offer for staff. We also have Boars Head Deli meat sliced to order. We bag lunches for field trips. And down in the bottom right, we have an opening day cookout for the seventh-grade students here at the junior high. And over on the left, we have, I don't even, is it Pat the Patriot, or I don't even know what, I don't know what his name is, but he came and showed up on, for the ninth graders for their first day, and he was grabbing a piece of watermelon from our fruit bar. So new and exciting is the recycling and composting. As I said, we partner with facilities, and we're soon going to be offering recyclable, compostable lunch trays. Our goal for this year is to roll out the recycling and composting at the junior high in just a couple weeks, and then we're going to roll out the high school in April or May, and then the other schools will follow. We participate in the Mass Farm to School program every year. This picture is of some students that are husking corn for the menu for the next day at Conant. We also have a cooking club that we feature twice a year for the students at the junior high. Deb Rimpis, Jean Tibbetts, and I take on that task, and we have a good time with the kids. It's a lot of fun. We have, we're part of a tech collaborative, so we currently bid with ninety-two other school districts so that we can get the best price for all of our products, and we conduct taste tests with all of our different items with students at different districts. Our food service website is located on the AB Schools homepage. We post our menus there. We have information pertaining to free and reduced lunches. We have our lunch prices. We have school café information, which again is the online payment system. We have pictures of our lunches and celebrity guest servers, and just some pictures of the fun times we have with our students developing recipes in health class. Our point-of-sale, we've had now since two thousand and eleven, so I hope this isn't redundant for people that have been on the committee for a long time, but I always like to let people know what it allows us to do. So it allows students to pay cash, or they can debit to their lunch account. Parents and guardians can add to their student account by cash, check, or credit card online. We generate weekly emails of a balance of five dollars or below, and we actually just automated that through Bright Arrow, which is really nice, so I don't have to get up on Sundays now and do all the reports and send them out, so that's a nice, like Bright Arrow's feature for that. We also have à la carte restrictions that are available through school café, and as I spoke about, the mobile app where parents can apply for free or reduced lunch. We track our inventory and orders through the point-of-sale system, so we're getting different modules going with this. We're looking at nutrient analysis. We've had some interns come in, entering some data for us with all our bids and things like that as well. Our lunch prices, this is just an overview. Basically, we've been able to maintain the same price since two thousand and thirteen, fourteen. Our base price is two seventy-five for all the schools, and then at the high school and junior high, we do have tiered pricing. So for example, a smoothie lunch costs a little bit more, it's three twenty-five. A salad lunch is a little bit more, or the Boars Head Deli sandwich. And that speaks to the next slide of why we are able to do that and keep those costs down. We have what's called a paid lunch equity, and so we need to be within an average lunch price with the Department of Ed. So by having the tiered pricing, it allows us to have a little bit higher average. So our average lunch price is two eighty-nine. They haven't set the rates yet for the eighteen nineteen school year, but we'll look at that once they do. This slide speaks to the student eligibility increase. We use the virtual gateway, and every month, we upload the student database into that system. So we started back in two thousand and twelve, and as you can see, it's increased over time. Just this year, we started with the gateway matching on reduced families as well, so you'll see that there's quite a significant increase in reduced lunches or reduced applications for eligibility. And also just to note that Gate School right now is almost at fifteen percent, just as an overall number. Our breakfast counts have been on the rise, and you'll see at the very last column, we have McCarthy Town and Marion showing their numbers there. And I should actually go back to that for a second. I think the main reason that we have such a jump at the high schools is because they have so much time. The kids, if they have a free period, they can come down. We serve breakfast till ten o'clock when we start serving lunch, so they have a lot more time to have breakfast and more opportunity than the students, they come in right before school to get it. These are reimbursable lunches, and the green is for paid lunches, blue is for free, and red is for reduced. And we just take a look at the bottom where we have the free lunches. Back in two thousand and twelve, thirteen, we did about nineteen thousand, six hundred, and in sixteen, seventeen, we did about forty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-four. So there's definitely been an increase. This slide just speaks to the equipment purchases and repairs that we've had just over time. You never know if something's going to break down or if you just have to replace it, so this is just kind of an average of what we've done. This is a comparison of our fund balance from Fiscal Year Fifteen through Fiscal Year Seventeen. You can see that we've been generating a profit every year. This slide is, slide on our receipts and expenses, and as well as our fund balance for two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen. Our current fund balance as of twelve thirty-one is about six hundred and sixty-five thousand. The Department of Ed recommends that we have a total of three months' operating expenses available for our fund balance, which we do have. So our recommendation at this time would be not to increase the lunch price. We do have to still wait to see what the new paid lunch equity rate would be, but we can hopefully try to work that with, you know, the tiered pricing that we've done. And we believe it takes a partnership, so between parents and guardians and faculty and staff, and our motto is a well-fed child is ready to learn. And I just want to say that we have two people, very important people at the high school that are retiring this year. On the left is Angie Centoro. She's been a cook with us since September of nineteen eighty-seven, and Heidi started in August of nineteen ninety-six. So these are going to be two people that we're really going to miss. So if you know of anybody we're advertising, and I just want to thank you for letting us serve our children each day. That's it. Oh, and I forgot to say, our cooking club, we did a little cookbook for all the kids, so here's just a little cookbook that we sent them home with. So it's just a little book. So, okay. bit. So, okay. Passing around?
So my kid, my son did the cooking club. It was awesome. He, he's so excited. He can't wait to sign up again this year.
That's great. We had a waiting list this year, so we're like jamming on that. So it's good.
That was my question, if I may. It looked like there were a lot of kids.
Yeah, well, we've, we've had, I think we started with maybe 15, and then we decided 12 was probably a little more manageable between the three of us, so we take two groups each year of 12 students. So that's what we've done.
Can, can you just describe what the club does? Because I'm, I'm just curious.
Sure. So we, we try to change it up a little bit every year. We've done an Italian dinner theme, so the students, they made their own marinara sauce, meat sauce. They made lasagna. They made a dessert. They made appetizers, all different things. And then we invited all the parents in for dinner, and so we had a nice Italian-themed dinner night at the junior high one night. We also did breakfast one year, last year, I think, or the year before, maybe last year, I guess. So we invited everybody, all the students from different, not different grades, but different teams. They came in and they did, I don't know if you saw it on the slide that we had, but they did some exercises with everybody before breakfast. It was really cool. Just go back real quick. Sorry. Whoop, I thought it was right here. Sorry. Over here. We had a full future for kids. And, and faculty as well that came in, and we opened up the, the cat. We set the tables for breakfast, and we had a small cat as well that we'd be doing for after food. So we did all kinds of exercises, dancing for kids in the morning, and then they came through and got their breakfast that we served. So we're doing smoothies and different things. We've done stir fry. We've done, their favorite one, I think, is cookies, you know, things like that. So we're doing healthy after-school snacks with this next session that we're starting.
Any other, yeah, Diane?
So that slide kind of passed by quickly, but 46,000 lunches for free and reduced lunch?
Um, when we go back. Sorry. Oops, it's back this way. It was broken out by free, sorry, free and reduced. So, yeah, so we went in 2012-13, we served 90,000 free students, all the way up to 46,000 reduced. That's lunches.
That's council lunches.
It's, it's actually a reimbursable lunch, so if somebody were to buy two lunches, that's not accounted for here. We get reimbursed for one lunch per student per day. So our lunch counts are actually higher than what's on the slide, but this is reimbursable lunches.
And, and the reimbursement is full reimbursement?
For a paid, for a free lunch student, it's a full reimbursement. A reduced lunch student, we get a partial reimbursement, and then we get a little bit of a reimbursement for a paid lunch student.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Any more questions, comments?
So I, I saw you have a, a fund balance that satisfies the three months.
Yep.
Is, is there a limit? Like, I know with E&amp;D, we have a limit, 5% of our, of our budget. Is there any kind of constraints that you have to work with, other than the, is there an upper limit on that?
Well, I think we're probably at a point where we need to have a plan to spend some of that money. We'll, when they come in and do a review, they like to see, you know, that you're around the three-month amount, that you at least have that, and we do have that. So we're probably, we're a little bit, I'd say we're probably about $100,000 over what they recommend. But, you know, a piece of equipment could be $30,000 at a whack, so that, you also have to think of that, too, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, Steve. Steve, you're next. Oh, sorry, Erin, you're next.
Good evening. Nice to see everybody. After that lovely presentation by Kirsten, I realized mine's a little budget-light and com-ed-heavy, so we'll see where we go with that. It's really interesting when you start a budget presentation for community ed, because year to year, season to season, things change. Our, our activities can change dramatically from year to year, whether, for instance, a couple years ago, all-day kindergarten was under our fold. Now it's not. We'd had McT as part of our extended day, then we didn't. So trying to do a linear analysis of our world is tricky. So I think ultimately the presentation's about how are we doing generally and how do we contribute back to the school district, because I think that's what's most important for, from community ed. So you can see, fiscal year '16, uh, '17, our most recent year, was a fantastic year for community ed. Our revenues were up quite a bit from the previous year, more so than traditionally, and expenses, you know, more steady as they typically have been. We looked back to try to understand why the revenues had jumped so well. We had a lot more kids participating in our programs, both extended day and classes. Driver ed was up. Summer day program was up. So I think it's nice to just see that we are maintaining the same kinds of programs, adding new things, and getting a nice response from the community. Those, approximate $3 million of our funding is in three revolving funds, for those of you who aren't familiar with this. Next year, it sounds like we'll have some more school committee members who, for whom this may be new, so. There's two small ones. Use of facilities is just about $300,000. Driver ed, again, just a couple hundred thousand dollars. And the rest is all the other things we do at community ed in one large fund. I do this each year, and I think it's just a good reminder of all the different positions, both within the school day and outside of the school day, and the people that are working with and for us. A change from last year is that we added another district custodian to our budget, so that five last year went to a six. We've got all sorts of adults and teenagers, people doing part-time, full-time, in a whole host of different areas across the district. So it's, it's several hundred people that are part of the com-ed team who make these things happen. This is always my favorite slide. It's the real meat and potatoes of what we are able to generate and give back to the community, because we always go back to Bill Ryan's reason for creating community ed, which was to use these wonderful facilities outside of the school day to benefit the families and the people and the residents of our town and, and give back to the school district. So over a half a million dollars in FY '17 in, in real things that we contributed back to the school district. I couldn't help putting this one on, because it's not very sexy to see light bulbs in the high school auditorium or porta-potties at Leary Field, but this is still fun, lo and behold, these months later. And, and it's, you know, you forgot how bad that old crummy sign was. And I think the folks at Blanchard are looking into the possibility of whether or not they can do something similar in Boxville. Some highlights for the year, things where we've improved on, places where growing and changing. Use of facilities, for those of you who used to fill out a paper form and either bring it into community ed or fax it in, it's terrific. It can all be done online. It's great on our end, because the users are the one picking the time, looking for the space, checking for conflicts. So it takes a lot of the work out of our hands. But it also has a really nice feature that we're trying to promote more and more, is a publicly viewable calendar. So it's not just the reports we send out to school staff and folks in towns what's happening. Anybody can hop on the com-ed website anytime and check a school, check a building, if they forget where they're going. I know Diane is a big fan of this system. Another great thing that happened this year, a couple years ago, when Steve Martin took over summer school, he partnered with us to do online registration through our online vendor. That was, that required him setting up a branch, which is an expensive, several-thousand-dollar thing that would kind of coexist side by side with the community ed main, main branch. We realized, Marne O'Grady and I, that that didn't really have to happen, so we folded the summer school registration within our system. And what's nice, it not only saved summer schools a couple thousand dollars, but families now just have one account for their children. They used to have to remember two accounts, two passwords. You can imagine that that wasn't fun. So it's a real nice improvement for people in the community. Those of you who know Bernadette Keegan, who runs our summer day program, know that she will look for a new opportunity, way to save money, new idea all the time, and God love her. She has reached out to local community, local colleges to find students who are pursuing degrees related to children and childcare and other kinds of education, and who are also part of the federal work-study program. And where she can, she's been able to bring them on as staff. So we have really mature, really talented, well-educated college students. Not that the other ones who aren't doing that aren't that way, but, but we also get a really great bang for our buck when they work for us, because the federal government is helping to pay their salary. So that was a terrific thing that started last summer. Bernadette and also Kate Murray at Extended Day both applied to the United Way as part of their initiative last year and, and received grants to support their programs. Bernadette does it primarily to support children who are economically disadvantaged who attend the program. Kate has done this really neat thing where she is bringing health and wellness initiatives such as yoga and gardening and other kinds of programs that develop resiliency and self-regulation skills and competence, so that kids have, you know, something to relax, rely on and develop skills that will help them in their life going forward. So those are happening, and the gardening was really fun to see last fall. They partnered over here with the beds at the junior high, and I think all those kinds of things are just going to continue to grow. And then another practical thing, we add another driver ed car this year. So on a busy day, we've got three cars out. They're full of kids. If we have a little incident and we have to take one offline, whether it's a regular kind of thing or a fender bender, it was the worst, because you've got to cancel on all those kids that are waiting for their driving. So we now have kept, we bought a new car. We, it was time to sort of mothball the eldest one, but we kept it, and it's wonderful, because it's still in perfect, good working order, and we can use it. So you can facilitate those kinds of repairs. Nobody loses time, either working hours or driving hours. So these kinds of things, we're doing all the time. As always, I, I feel like a little bit of a bore putting this up, but space does limit what we can do, and we try to max out and to a large extent have what we've got. Can't wait for that new skill, school building to be designed and see what opportunities it might present for community ed. And then I wanted to put this up, because I think it's something we've been seeing more and more, and it won't be a surprise to you folks, that the kinds of needs you're seeing during the school day for kids, whatever they are for support, do travel with those children to our programs, whether it's during the summer or after school. And so we're facing the same kinds of challenges of adding more staff with special skills who may be able to support those kids in ways that they need. So it's something to keep on our radar screen as our programs grow and expand and that kind of thing. And, and you know, looking to next, this coming year, I think the biggest challenge and the thing we're focusing most on is bringing together all of the before-and-after-school programs. So I think it's enough to, to leave that as a goal. Kate Murray and Marie and I and everybody have been starting to meet with those folks, learn about the program, see where they can ease, be easily aligned, what's going to happen in the fall, what might have to wait. And it's going to be a, a great but complicated journey over, I think, the next couple of years. And that's it.
Thank you, Erin. Questions?
Okay, yep. Quick, yeah. Not quick, I'm sorry.
Well, first, I do love, you know, I do, I, the, the system that she put on, online, people can go in and, and see what's going on at the buildings is, I mean, I find it very helpful, just because, you know, kids are always looking for space, or if you have a conflict with something, it's, it is, it's so easy to get into, so thank you for doing that. I have a question, because it was, it was based on actually what you said, the last thing, because we're always looking for ways to improve or, or anything. I guess the, the one concern I've always had with community education is it doesn't fall under any state programs in regards to assistance, does it? Like, there's no way for any economically disadvantaged families to participate in the community?
No.
Is there? Is there?
There is. Not in the general programs, per se, but under extended day, for many years, we've been part of the childcare voucher program, and so families apply to that program to receive a voucher that they can use for the summer day program, extended day, or our vacation week programs. That's something we're looking at, how we're going to handle that with the programs folded together next year, and, and what, so we're, we're looking at different options for there. But other than some scholarships that Bernadette has sought through United Way and the childcare voucher, we haven't had an additional source of support that way.
And there's no state method or anything, because it does fall under the school umbrella that it could help, you know, that could help? Because, because a lot of kids can't participate, say, in a community ed basketball program or stuff like that, right, because they, they can't afford those programs. And, and again, since our population's increasing, you know, is there any way to look through a state aid to help in any of that?
I don't think there's a state aid, because these are all considered enriching, additional, as opposed to mandatory kinds of things. You know, the bottom line is, we try to price everything as low as we can, enough to make a little money on every little, everything. So the base pricing is done with that in mind, to keep it affordable for all families. I think the trick is if we were to start thinking about scholarships or something, it would be bottom line right out of our budget, so we'd have to plan carefully. And then what's hard is determining where and how and who is eligible and how you share that out, and that's something that I don't think we've felt comfortable participating in yet. So that would be, you know, I do understand the need growing, and that's why when we're looking for the bringing together of all the extended days, things have happened differently at Conan, at Douglas, and Marion, and Blanchard. And so that's an important question for us, because when we think of that, we think parents who need to go to work and know that their child is somewhere safe and, and happy. So we're definitely making that a priority for that evolution. Yep.
Thank you. Okay, Steve, thank you very much. Erin.
Hi, everyone. I'm Steve Martin, Director of Athletics here. So last year, we raised our athletic fee, and it helped out super big time for us. I was still super, super conservative with the budget, because I didn't know how it was going to play out. I still didn't know how the decline was going to happen, how much we were going to decline. We had been declining on five, at 5%. So that was all figured in. So I did not spend anything on uniforms, on, on fixing up the, the fields in any way, on getting scoreboards. I've put all that off to, to figure out how much, what this, this fee increase would look like. And it, it's gone up. We, we, we were $66,000 positive last year, coming from a few years of, of being in the, the red. So those numbers contributed these numbers, the super conservative numbers. I will not be at negative $7,000 this year. So that, that's based on the start of the year, based on the last year's numbers, but the expenses are based on if everything from the start of the year, for us, was awesome. So for budget, it wouldn't be good. So it means every single team was filled, every single team made the playoffs, every single team went to the state championship. We had officials. We had home games for all those. So all that money is figured into the expenses, and then the 5% decrease that we expected is figured into the revenue. It will not be there. We didn't have a seventh-grade soccer teams for either one, so we're already up $10,000 in salaries there. We're not going to have a boys freshman lacrosse team this year, just based on numbers. So we're already at positive $4,000 in that range right now, based on projected numbers. So that's not going to be, that's the start of the year. That's if everything was great for the athletic teams, but not good for the budget. So I mean, I would be fantastic if we were going to state championships. Also not in those revenue numbers would be if we did host the playoff game. We made $2,000 when the boys hosted the playoff game last year. So these are just the projected numbers when the year started. We're trying some new things this year to, to get more kids involved. For example, we've applied for a waiver. We had 35 girls that are interested in playing junior high softball. We only have a varsity team for, for softball at the high school level, so we have 10 kids that are interested in playing junior varsity softball. That's not enough to have a team if someone gets hurt. So what we're going to do is, we, we've applied for a waiver and worked with the state. We're one of the first teams in the state to get a junior high waiver for girls to play JV, even though we have a middle school team. So we're going to have three or four girls that are going to have the opportunity to play on the junior varsity. They don't have the opportunity to play varsity, but they have the opportunity to make the junior varsity team. But that also gives three or four or five girls the opportunity that would have been cut from the junior high, because we can't keep 30 girls on the junior high team. So we've gotten that. And I'm going to look at that in the future, when it comes to, to things like boys lacrosse. If we know early enough, we're not going to be able to field a team. Let's look at the junior high and see if we have the interest there. That's going to generate maybe a freshman team or a junior high team across all the sports. So I'm trying to get more kids interested, trying to get more kids involved in sports. So those are some of the things that I've done a little bit, but I would like to do more next year. So just from now, we expect it to be down 5%. That's historically what we've been down for the last five to seven years. We've been down 5% in participation. But we are only down 3% in the fall, and we're not down any. We're, we're actually up one person in the winter, and last spring, we were level. So I don't expect it to go down 5% like it has been. I expect it to be at 3. So that's a positive thing for us. And hopefully with softball, with getting more kids interested, hopefully there's more of an interest there. Hopefully, we can keep all the kids that try out for the lacrosse team. We did not have a freshman team last year, but we didn't know until tryouts last year. team last year, but we didn't know until tryouts last year. We were expecting a freshman team, but four or five kids got hurt in other sports at the start of the year. So they weren't able to play lacrosse. Revenue is down from that 3% from the fall season when we were down 3%. We're not down anything for the winter. Kate's feeds are down, but we haven't gotten our Thanksgiving split. We split every Thanksgiving. We get half the profit with Westford Academy. We haven't gotten that. So technically, we're down, but we will be up around 1,500. Last year, we had a little bit bump of an ABSAF gift. That's not in the budget this year. So this was expected. It wasn't anything a surprise to us. Gifts, we have some big donations coming in to buy new cheerleader mats and gymnastics mats. So that's coming from the Colonial Club, which runs the Hall of Fame. It's coming from our boys basketball boosters and our boys football boosters, or boys and girls football and cheer boosters. So they're giving, they're paying for one mat each, the two booster clubs, and the Colonial Clubs are paying for three. And then the athletic department is starting to invest some of that 66,000. I'm trying to invest that money back into things that we've held off for a long time. So we bought new uniforms for all the junior high fall teams. We bought new uniforms for field hockey. We bought a scoreboard for the softball field. So those are things we're starting to invest back into the program that we haven't had, haven't had the opportunity to do for the last four or five years. So next year, I don't need a fee increase. I think we will be pretty good in that area. I'm going to ask for, last year, we did step one of a three-year program where we started to invest in some assistant coaches at the varsity level, where we didn't have assistant coaches for safety reasons. If someone gets hurt, the varsity coach would have to turn around, work with that kid. Now no one's coaching the game. Or we had booster clubs that were asking students to pay booster clubs and then those booster clubs are doing fundraising for booster clubs. And now they're paying for the assistant coaches. So we've tried to work on that. So we did one year, we did six coaches last year. I'm looking for six coaches this year, which will be relatively about between 24 and 27, depending on what level our coaches are at. And then next year, it would be the same amount. So we just took the one lump sum instead of one year and tried to divide it over three years. So it wasn't that much of a hit on the budget. And that's all I'm asking for next year.
Thank you.
Thanks Steve. Do you have any questions or comments for Steve?
Yep.
How many, because we're rolling the assistant coaches into our budget. So how many, does each team get one assistant coach? Or, you know, how do you determine how many assistants?
So yeah, so I was looking to offset. So last year, we added boys and girls, each added a soccer assistant coach for the soccer teams. And then we did baseball and softball and we did, I forget what the other two were. Oh, basketball, the two basketball coaches. So we've added those six assistant coaches. This year, we're looking at lacrosse, we're looking at field hockey. I forget what the other, the other three are, but there's six of them total.
I guess, right, I mean, they're, they're not, so we're slowly rolling all the assistant coaches into the budget?
Yes. So if there is an assistant coach, it's paid for by the boosters.
And then you'll roll it into the budget?
Yeah.
And then it's one per team, I guess?
Yeah.
Cool.
Okay, thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
So thank you Dave, Kirsten, Erin and Steve for your presentations. Much appreciated. Good job. Are there any last questions on the budget piece before we move on?
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to item number five, the school building committee update. Mary.
So we had one meeting following the special town meetings. I would just suggest you look at the minutes from that. They're in your packet on pages 55 to 58. But in particular, look at page 56. Bill did a great job of outlining for the committee the timeline and steps going forward. And I just want to point out that it's a process we're in now and it's MSBA's process. And so we really won't be hiring an OPM until mid-April and then the, oh, what's the other person, other group called? The designer comes after that. So, you know, there's time before we hit the ground running and have a lot more work to do.
Questions? Comments? Oops, can't keep the mic on. Well, we were going to do the Merriam School Principal. We can hold, just take a quick little pause. Come on, surely somebody has a comment or question about something that's happened so far.
John Peterson, Six Jackson Drive Acton. This goes back to the question of the regional agreement. So one aspect of the regional agreement is that it is to be considered after five years. So we're coming up on that time and I was wondering if the school committee had a plan for the reconsideration of the regional agreement.
I would say, no, we haven't talked about that at all. And with all the initiatives we have going on right now, I don't see us opening it anytime soon. It's a major initiative to open the regional agreement.
Well, hold on, wait a minute. Let me just ask. It is a major initiative, but, and I've forgotten now because I haven't read the agreement, but it is, we do have the option of revisiting after five years. But how do we make that decision? Was it in the agreement?
I think it's always in the agreement. I don't think it was anything new, but I haven't looked at it, that we can always look at it periodically and see if there's anything we want to adjust. There hasn't, in my view, there hasn't been anything that's come up in the last, you know, few years since we've put the revised agreement in place-
Right.
-that we've said we want to be reopening it, so.
Okay.
Do you have a follow-up question?
Just a comment. I have actually recently read the regional agreement and I believe it does require that it be examined. You don't have to do anything. But I don't believe that when you read the agreement, you will find that you can simply ignore the fact that the agreement says it should be picked up at five years and looked at.
Okay, so let us do a little bit of research on that and get back to you. Okay. Marie, are you ready?
Sure. I just want to say one thing about that. This is the fourth year, though. So next year's the fifth year. Okay, so I'm going to talk about two things quickly. One is the Merriam School Principal update and the other is the kindergarten registration update. So the Merriam School Principal Search Committee has been doing a great job. We have a great committee, 15 people. We have parents, teachers, administrators, et cetera. And we closed, so the posting was open early December. It closed January 4th. And the committee has reviewed, we had 24 applicants. So they very thoroughly reviewed all 24 candidates' applications. Two snow days were quite helpful for that process. And yesterday, the committee met and selected candidates to interview. The interviews will be next week. I think at this point, we have eight interviews scheduled. And so then, the week after, we should be announcing finalists. And there'll be site visits either last week of January, first week of February. So you'll be hearing more at your next meeting or by your next meeting. Any questions about that? The kindergarten, we had our kindergarten night Monday night. It was great. I think we had about 140 parents there, most of whom were new families. It was Bill's first kindergarten night with us here at AB. And we went over all of our processes, registration and so on. As you know, we've gone to a fully online registration process. That's been quite successful. And so registration opened January 10th and will, everyone has to register by March 1st. And then the lottery will be held in March. And so we're on our way with that process. The tours are starting and the kindergarten nights in each school start next Tuesday. So we have six Tuesdays in a row of kindergarten nights that parents have an opportunity and guardians to attend. But it's always a really positive night. We love welcoming all those new families to our district. Happy to answer any questions.
No? It's a very quiet night tonight. Okay. So we'll just move on to the superintendent search update. Do you want to start us out or do you want to?
So the superintendent search process, as I think you're aware, is well underway and we're now just getting into the really formal part of the process. And in preparing for, in preparing for the wrapping up of, in the upcoming deadline for candidates to apply, the screening committee will start its work in another couple of weeks, working closely with the consultants. So in preparation for that, there are three decisions that the school committee is being asked to make, hopefully tonight. They were outlined on the agenda and you've been provided with additional information in your packet. The three items are a review and approval of the candidate profile, recommendation for members of the screening committee, and then a recommendation for establishing a salary range. I know we're going to start with the candidate profile. You've received the memo from the working group. And Diane, I think you were going to speak to that? Were you? Yes.
Okay. Okay, so the candidate profile was, to my knowledge, submitted to us by NESDEC. NESDEC went and compiled all of the data from all of the forums that they ran, the community forums here. I think there were, were there six of them? I believe there were six. So were there seven? Seven. Plus all the data from the surveys. So that was voluminous. And we received it here in the district, I believe, Monday. And it was distributed to the committee Monday evening, Monday late afternoon, Monday evening. And it was distributed to the school committee, I think on Tuesday, on Wednesday, yesterday. So I have not really had time to digest all of the information, given the time that we've had, this very short time that we've had to look at it. So I'm going to just ask for feedback from the rest of you. But I'd like to postpone the vote on this until we've had time to really digest it and respond to the memo that asks us to edit, add, or just reflect upon, maybe change the bullet order to reflect our priorities based on the information in that voluminous packet. And I also would like to feedback from my colleagues on school committee on whether or not this should be made public. Because to my knowledge, it has not been made public yet. It's not posted anywhere and it was not in our packet. So...
If I could just interject, Diane, I'm sorry, I put you on the spot there. You were going to speak to the screening committee. So I'm sorry, I got my notes mixed up. And I certainly, yes. And I certainly understand the fact that there's a lot of information. We did just receive this from NESDEC earlier in the week. It's important to remember, in my opinion, though, it's important to remember that this is a major part of the consultant's work, putting all of this data together. This is done through the work that they did with the focus groups, taking all of that feedback along with the online survey feedback and then consolidating it. They glean all of the feedback into major components. In this case, they took that feedback and established four major components of the candidate's profile and did that while doing their own comprehensive review of all of the comments, et cetera. I think it's important to remember that this is what they do, that this is one of the major reasons why, one of the key reasons why school committees work with consultants to put together all of this work. I would suggest that, you know, they've identified these four major components. Those major components are reflective of key indicators that all of the participants, both through the online survey and the focus groups, time after time, provided along those similar themes. And what the consultants have done, they've broken that out into the four major components, those similar indicators that support that particular component theme. And so what they're really asking you to do is to take a look at that data and based on, you know, I think, I think it's difficult frankly, to go through item for item, to do a total comprehensive review of all of those, and then go back and determine whether the candidate profile that the consultant put together as a result of that work should be adjusted. Perhaps it should. I certainly understand if committee feels they need more time to review this. The one thing I would remind you is that the schedule now is tight. And if the committee wanted to do that, we would need to schedule a meeting in order to come back for that, to do that. And that meeting has to be prior to January 25th. Because the candidate profile is a major tool that the screening committee will use when it starts reviewing candidate application materials. The candidate profile will be a guide as the screening committee goes through. So, you know, I understand the desire to be thorough. I don't think it's unreasonable. But if you don't vote tonight, you need to approve that candidate profile before the screening committee conducts its review. And there are a number of, there are a number of searches going on out there that have similar deadline dates as ours. And I think it's important to stay to the schedule to get this process accomplished.
Diane, I agree that it is quick, although I do have to say I had hours the other day to pour over this. And I did go through like two-thirds of the comments that we received, you know, like the specific things from the survey, not just the percentages and everything, but the actual commentary. And I have to say, I think I mentioned to you, Bill, when we were at our meeting on Tuesday, that this was really worthy for like a candidate profile. But I have to say that it's really reflective of what most of the comments, at least the ones I got through, said, like remarkably reflective. I don't know if, I didn't read the bullet points underneath each category to be ordered. To me, they just sort of were all things that we would consider and they really did come directly from the actual words that people used in a lot of the, in a lot of the commentary. So, and having attended two of the focus groups, I was really surprised at how accurate they were able to condense all of that information into, into four things. So to me, I think that everyone of us sitting at the table looking at those four things, I mean, it's a profile. It's what we're using as our screening tool. And so it's, it's really- And so it's, it's really, it's broad. It carries a lot of the actual sentiments, I think, of the community. And so it, to me, as a screening tool, I don't know that we do necessarily need more time to really pare it down any more than that. I mean, I really felt like they were able to capture a lot of what is reflected in the survey and what I saw from the two focus groups that I went to. So just my two cents.
I mean, I have to say, unfortunately, I haven't had the few hours in the day. And I guess I'm a bit frustrated because we received the packet on Tuesday, and then we receive an email with this. I didn't even get this email yet because I was still trying to get through the packet because I rely on looking at the packet typically over the weekend. And I didn't have that opportunity. So I can't vote on something that I haven't been able to review. As much as it reflects, you know, how accurate it might be, you were able to go to the, the forums and stuff, I wasn't able to. I can't vote on something I haven't seen. I, I would like to understand why everything came so late to us because these are pretty big things to have to go through. And usually, you know, spending a few hours each night, I don't think is unreasonable to go through, you know, all the information that we have to. But I don't have more than a few hours a day to go through it. And I was asked to go through this, and then it came, it wasn't even attached in our addendums to the, you know, on the, on the website. Like I go through everything I need to on the website under meeting and agenda so I know what I need to prepare for the meeting. And that wasn't even on there. So I totally missed it because I wasn't able to get through my emails. Again, because everything started pouring in on Tuesday. So I don't, I don't understand what the delay was. And I have to abstain from voting on anything because I, you know, you want us to come prepared. I wasn't able to come prepared because I wasn't able to even get through this. You know, it was enough getting through my packet for the meeting and the finances that I wanted to go through that I really wasn't even able to look at this. So...
Yeah, so we knew the, the timing and the schedule would be tight based on the overall schedule that was developed. NESDEC worked very hard to get it here by Monday afternoon. Perhaps there was a misjudgment, and I'll take responsibility for that, that the working group was going to have the opportunity to see it first, and then we were going to send it out to the full committee. So I, I'm not, my comments are not intended to reflect an opinion that anyone who does not feel ready or comfortable because they haven't had the time to vote on this, to force that vote. I think that would be a mistake, quite frankly. And I think that this is an important part of the process. And it's important to, to keep an air of integrity to this process. And that's been the intention from the outset. So taking more time to review it, I, I don't think is a bad thing. But as a group, again, we just have this timeline that we're facing. So if we can find a time, you know, prior to the 25th, then I think it would be, if there's a time next week when the committee can get together for a one-agenda item meeting to vet this further and then come to hopefully a consensus on what the candidate profile should look like. You know, I think that's okay. It's just, you know, getting the logistics of having that done, which we're certainly prepared to, to accomplish. So I do understand the frustration.
Let's not forget, we had snow days last week too, which, you know, didn't help the situation either. But it is what it is. So I have a couple of questions about the document. And I, I'm not sure what something means and not, I just don't have the context. So if you look on page four, in the last bullet in that top section where it talks about a candidate has experience with other cultures and preferably internationally, I wasn't sure really what that means. What are we looking for? A candidate who has international educational experience or with international...
I took it to mean experience with students from other countries.
Yeah. That, I wondered that. But it's, in that case, it's a little bit confusing the way it's written.
So I think that that was taken directly from the, one of the four focus groups.
Yeah, it was. I saw it in those comments too.
But, yeah, so, and I think the intention is to just have the candidate that needs to have a worldview and needs to be...
Say that instead of...
Agreed.
Internationally.
Yeah.
It's just a little confusing though, its worded. And then at the end of the, sorry. At the end of the document, the section called Tasks the Community Wishes the New Superintendent to Focus Upon in the First Six to Twelve Months. I don't think that section belongs in this document. I think this document is meant to drive the review or to inform the review of candidate applications. And I don't really think that that section, it's, it's relevant once the person's hired, when they're doing their entry plan, et cetera. That can inform that process. But I don't think it belongs in this document.
I think that would be a good question for me to call Sally Dyess and ask, kind of, what the thinking was there.
Yeah, based on what I looked at. I didn't read everything line by line either, I just didn't have time. But I thought it was a very comprehensive summary of the comments that were in both the survey and in the other documentation. So I think it gives the subcommittee who ends up doing the screening a lot to work with.
So can I get a, just one second. Can I get a sense from people about whether they would like to delay the vote? I mean, I, I'm, I'm not comfortable asking people to vote if there are members that are going to abstain. I would prefer to delay at this point. But we all also have to agree to get together before the 25th to, to, to vote this. Is there a sense on the committee that, that you would like to postpone the vote?
I think we should see if we can find a date next week because if, if, we need to make the vote soon. So if we can find a date, I'm willing to postpone. But if we can't, I'm not.
I would like to echo what Bill said about this whole thing. And by, of course, we probably don't have enough time to read through this very carefully. I remember last time we had this situation for something else. And by just glance at this documentation, and I have to say, I agree with 96, 97% of them. And just like Bridget, I mentioned, maybe there are some kind of, maybe modification for some lines. Other than that, I'm, other than that, I'm very comfortable to vote for, you know, to catch the timeline. And like last time, Bill said that maybe we'll vote tonight, and we'll leave the subcommittee to have the minor modification. I like that way. Thank you.
Other thoughts or comments at this point? Yeah, Dennis.
This is a big document. And if it's that important, we should, probably should have got it before, I mean, when I read it yesterday. I got it to, I got it in my email yesterday. So, and I understand why, because of the sheer size of the document. It was 60 pages. But right on here, it's like, you know, this final profile will be developed based on changes and edits requested by the school committee. That's the charge in the, in the document itself, or what they're telling us. And you can't expect that we're going to come with changes and edits to the profile if it's that important of a document by getting it, you know, a 60-page document the day before. Granted, maybe you don't necessarily have to go through the final 20 pages, which was everybody's responses from online. But still kind of an important thing. The other thing too is, we talked about the integrity of the process. Having this thing not necessarily buried, but having it not public, and then all of a sudden, the day before we go to vote on it, it's like, ooh, here it is. You know, it doesn't look great. So, but I understand why, because it's not, it's just the timing of it and just the sheer amount of information that they had to put together. I totally get that. So I'd rather pick a date and come in for a one-topic meeting and then do it from there.
We can do that. I do want to comment about the public piece. So the whole document is based on, on public input and what all the, the, that's exactly where all of the information came from. So the idea that we need to then make it, I think you were asking Diane. I absolutely make it public, but of course. But we're not making it public in order to solicit comment and, and feedback from the public about it. Because that's what, that was all the work that went into it. All of that work has been done, and this is, this is the result of that. So I think that's really important to remember, that, that's where we are now with this. I, I do want us to just find, try to find a date. If you have something, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I just look at it, I know it's not public. You're, you're, you're basically, this, this few pages is a summary of 60 pages. More eyes looking at the 60 pages and making sure that the summary reflects the 60 pages. Right? I mean, the public isn't adding to it, it's just making sure that everything's reflected in those.
Right now, it's the school committee's task to look at all this data and develop the final document. There was never any attention of never posting this. This will be posted. All of this information will be posted. There was an assumption that, that would be tomorrow. But we, we get it. So, yeah, I, I would recommend that we try to find a date that we can flesh this out.
Yeah. And so we wouldn't be posting it until after we'd voted it. Because this is just a draft. And the committee needs to make that final recommendation to vote before it's posted as our candidate profile. I'm not, go, okay. So what, Beth, do you see for next week? Evenings are preferable if we can.
Yeah.
I can do Tuesday, Wednesday, or Friday. Yep, I could do Wednesday. How about Wednesday, the 17th? How does that look on everyone's schedule? It would be in the evening, yes. At 7:00?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yes. Eileen? Wednesday, the 17th, evening? I, I hope so. I mean, we can do, we could start at 6:30. I'm sorry? Okay. So let's, is 6:30 okay? It's always one in the group. Yeah. You're out all week next week? Okay, well then we need to make sure that we have a, well, that sucks for you, doesn't it? Florida, sounds awesome. I can't... So, good, okay. Okay. So 7 o'clock on Wednesday. Dennis can't be here, and Deanne cannot be here. But both of you will send your comments in. And Maya isn't here, but...
Is it 7:00 or 6:30? I think we got a sense from other people that, that 6:30 wouldn't work.
Tessa? Yeah? You can't send a vote, yeah. You can definitely send the comments. And then Beth, if you would just check in with Maya? So if we lose Maya, Dennis, and Deanne... So as long as we don't lose anyone else. From Acton, yes. Oh, Erin?
I just want to say, a concert would do online.
Yeah.
I don't know if everyone has it on a radar screen with the junior high concerts. If anybody has a care, the child was in the chorus of the orchestra, that's next Wednesday.
Oh, we watched. Last week was a band, a band concert. This coming week, so just want to put that out there for anybody who needs it. I don't think it's possible. So what do you think? This group is open for that event. That's awesome. That's awesome.
Thank you for that. How does morning look for anyone? Everyone? Like, I mean, we can do early. Like 7:30?
I can do 7:30.
Oh, awesome. Let's do 7:30. Yes, except Dennis, because he's going to be in Florida. Poor guy.
Will that meet the 48-hour notice?
Yeah, if you post it.
Yeah, you'd have to post it tonight.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you, Beth. Okay. So, go ahead, Beth.
No. Superintendent's conference room, yeah.
Room 13, so 7:30 next Wednesday, 7:30 in the morning, in the superintendent's conference room. Room 13. Okay, so let's, if that's good, let's move to the, what are we doing next? The screening, the screening committee. And that is Diane.
That is votable, yeah. So I just, I want to apologize for throwing a monkey wrench into that, the candidate profile. I just really believe strongly that it is, because it is such a comprehensive document, and it is such an important document because it will drive the screening process, that we should give everyone a chance to weigh in and read it and digest it. So I apologize. I know it's an administrative nightmare. So, okay, so I'm glad it worked out. So on, on Tuesday, January 9th, the superintendent search working group met to review applications for parent participation and membership on the screening committee. We received 12 extremely high-qualified parent guardian requests. They were, they were just amazing people who volunteered their, their time. And, and it was a very, it was a very difficult decision to make. We, we have, we have, we're presenting to you a slate of, of members. And everyone else was nominated by their cohort. So this is in your packet, and it's up for a vote tonight. Is there anything else I, I should say? Any questions? I'm happy to entertain.
Any questions or comments? Yep.
Just thank you to all the people that put in a name, in their name to do it. It is a lot of work, and we really appreciate it. So thank you.
Mary?
You mentioned the parents, but then there's also community members. Were there multiple choices among those as well, or?
We received two, two letters from community members. So we did not have a competitive pool among, among that cohort.
Paul?
Should we read the names out?
Yep. Yeah. Are you going to make them?
Thanks, Mary. Okay, so I'll move to approve the recommendation for a search screening committee membership, the following people. Damon Shagru, the principal of Luther Conan Elementary School. Dana Lab, principal of Blanchard Memorial Elementary School. Lee Alali, teacher at the Merriam School. Kathy Simmons, speech and language pathologist at Douglas School. Amanda Bailey, sped pack representative. Kelly Carter, A B E A representative. Mike Coppolino, a community member from Acton. John Fallon, community member from Boxborough. Kira Wilson Cook, a parent from McCarthy Town. Stephen Mucci, a parent from Blanchard. Chidi Aruchalam, Aran Chalam, I apologize. Parent from Conan and RJ Gray, Junior High. The other, and the other three, Diane, Amy, and Tessa, have already been appointed.
All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions. Okay, thank you.
Next item is the establishment of a salary. Either a range or a salary statement up to a certain salary level. Shortly after our last meeting, I received a call from one of the consultants, Tony Bent. And Tony's role, one of his major roles is the recruitment phase. And what he shared with me was that he had been, he'd been talking with a lot of prospective candidates. He'd been talking with a lot of prospective candidates who were sitting superintendents with years of experience. And questions, one of the common questions he was being asked was, is there a salary range? And for experienced superintendents who are looking to perhaps make a move, perhaps they've been in their district for a while, they, they believe that they've, you know, achieved the goals that they wanted to set, wanted to in that district, and are looking for a new opportunity, but, but are comfortable in their districts. You know, they're looking for incentives in, in, in making a move. So, so one of those incentives is, is salary. So, so it reminded me that the school committee needed to, one of the processes, one of the steps, was to establish a salary range for, for the new superintendent. And so in your packet, you've been provided with the salaries of superintendents in the comparable communities that AB uses. And these are FY nineteen, FY eighteen salaries, so we want to remember that. Three pieces of information for the salaries in each of the communities or districts. Enrollment, I think enrollment is important to look at in terms of the size of the district, although it doesn't always equate the eighteen salary, and then experience. So, so the experience column is, is years of experience as a superintendent in that particular district. I can tell you that in going through this list. So, so two of the most, in the comparable communities, Conca Colai on Weston have first-year superintendents. They're both, one is two-hundred thousand, one is two-hundred and five. Both candidates are in that position, having not had previous superintendent experience. And if you go down this list, I would tell you that the Belmont, in Belmont, first three years as a superintendent. In Dedham, first experience as a superintendent. Harvard, I'm not sure. Hingham, I'm not sure. In Marblehead, in Milton, first, first-time superintendents. Needham, very experienced. Reading, very experienced there, but did, did not have previous superintendent experience there, et cetera. So there's quite a range here. If we look at some of our nearby communities, I think you, you get a good, a good picture. Higher-performing districts that have approximately the same enrollment that we do. You know, districts like, like Needham, salary range is above two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. A number of these, of these salaries are enhanced with some other salary components. So we, we want to keep that in mind. Anyway, having, having looked at this, brought this information to the working group on Tuesday, talked about the fact that the current salary level is right around two-hundred thousand dollars. That's what it would have been this year here at AB. And my recommendation, based on looking at this information, is that the superintendent, that the school committee at a minimum, and by minimum, I don't mean the dollar amount, but one way to establish the salary and, in terms of a range, but give yourself flexibility in case the eventual selected candidate does not have experience as a superintendent or, relatively speaking, fewer years than, than experienced superintendents on this list. The recommendation is to establish a salary up to two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. You could establish a range at the lower end, but, you know, your, your, your level now is about two-hundred thousand. So, you know, I think that, you know, again, depending on the candidate. But if, if, if you have an experienced superintendent who is motivated to come to AB, salary will be one of those deciding factors. And I, I think it's not unreasonable to at least be able to go to that level. And of course, in the end, it's, you know, that's part of the negotiation that happens beyond that. But if you do that tonight, we still have another week. And I know in talking to Dr. Bent, that there are some candidates out there who are, who are seriously considering formalizing an application, but are looking to understand what that salary range the school committee is, is establishing.
Yeah, I actually like the way it's worded, just because it gives us the flexibility on both sides. And you're right, if someone's going to jump, and, you know, I would, I would like to look for, I personally would like to look for somebody who's got experience running a district similar to what we've got now. And then getting them to jump is really going, from a salary perspective, will make someone take a look at it. So I'm fully supportive of this.
Other comments? Yep.
I can support this as well.
Okay, well, I'm making, looking for a motion.
I'll move to...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry, Eileen, I missed you there.
I just wanted to understand this a little bit more. Because by reading all those information down there, shall we make a range? Like, maybe what kind of situation could be what? And the number is up to two-hundred-and-twenty thousand. Is there some kind of situation we can specify a little bit? Like, this superintendent, we don't, we don't see, maybe the first-time superintendent, could be one number, and this very rich, experienced superintendent before, what could be the number? And then it's up to, I just, that's just from my understanding, and I think maybe that would be better, I don't know.
I think, I think I understand where you're coming from, but I would expect that that kind of discussion would come up once you are talking to specific candidates and negotiating with them on the range. So I think if you say up to two-hundred-and-twenty thousand, it gives the committee the ability to go up that high, but not necessarily. It'll be worded depending on experience and qualifications. So I think that, that would be common, you'd see that common, commonly in an ad or in information that people were seeking, I think. I think to specify any more than that is tying our hands when we don't really need to, in terms of limitations.
I, I agree with Bridget. There, there's so many different ways to establish permutations for different salary numbers that it, I think for now, all we need to do is establish a cap and let us do that work organically when we're working with a, with a prospective candidate. I'll move to approve a superintendent, a cap on the superintendent's salary of two-hundred-and-twenty thousand.
All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions. Did you get that, Beth? Bridget, okay. Okay, great. Thank you very much. So I think, yeah, we'll just move right into subcommittee reports. Does policy, um, policy, that's, it looks like Deb. Dawn? Deb, Dawn?
That would be me. So the one, there are two in your packet. The first one is a second read of IHB, which is the Programs for Students with Special Education Needs. That one, after a lot of discussion and a number of questions, the last time around, the policy subcommittee met again and looked through that and talked a little bit about Section 504 specifically. So opted to create another policy specific to 504 to address some questions that were raised around that. That is IHBA. That's in your packets. But it is, there's actually an extra word in the title. It says statement, I think, and it shouldn't say statement. So what I would propose to do, hopefully, is request a vote on IHB, which is the Programs for Students with Special Needs, and look to do a first reading on February first at your next scheduled meeting on IHBA.
Okay. So I'm looking... So I'm looking for a motion. Bridget?
Move to approve policy IHB Programs for Students with Special Education Needs.
All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions. Okay, thank you. Okay, so are there any school committee reports? Anyone, I don't have them all detailed here, but anything, anyone wants to report? Yeah, Bridget?
So at BLF, just a couple of things. Our last BLF was twelfth of December, which I would have thought we reported on last time, but I guess not. Just a couple of things to note. We're still looking for a couple of members for our finance committee. So if anybody in the audience is interested, please contact our John Fallon. And then one thing I thought was interesting, health insurance for the town is up fifteen percent this year, in contrast to what we're experiencing in the district. And then also, Boxborough is expecting six students at Minuteman Tech, one at Nishoba, and one at Asabet, which is going up a little bit, so that's good. And then we also have a special town meeting, which just got called for the end of February to consider a land purchase for one of our municipal buildings. So that'll be end of February, February twenty-third or fourth, something like that. Don't quote me on that, but anyway, that was just called, and our next meeting is January twenty-third.
Okay, great. Anyone else?
Just to correct it, it's February twenty-sixth, special town meeting.
Okay, so let's move on to the consent agenda. I'm just going to read these out, and if you would like me to pull, if you'd like to pull something, just let me know. Eleven point one, Statement of Warrants and the Approval of Minutes, the minutes of twelve, fourteen, seventeen meeting. Eleven point two, these are donations to our schools. There is a recommendation to approve sixteen thousand donation from the Friends of the Acton Libraries to the ABRSD Libraries. There is a recommendation to approve a two-thousand-dollar donation from Mark Lawrence Photographers, Inc. to the Junior High School to support student activities. And there is a recommendation to approve a one-thousand-dollar donation from Kane Electric for the Blanchard School Library. So...
I'll move to approve with thanks to the Friends of Acton Libraries, thanks to Mark Lawrence, thanks to Kane Electric.
All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions. Thank you very much. Go ahead. No, that's me. Sorry, I was just given this a little bit ago. Oh, here we go. Okay. At your seat are two letters received this morning from the Attorney General's Office regarding their final determination related to two open-meeting law complaints filed by a citizen. Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. Bill, Bill, Bill wrote this. Okay, so they're posted on the website. In the first complaint, the Attorney General has found that there was no violation of the open-meeting law. In the second complaint, the Attorney General has found that the open-meeting law was violated based on a memo distributed to the school committee one day prior to a scheduled school committee meeting. It constituted deliberation outside of said meeting. In their findings, however, the Attorney General ruled that there would be no additional relief as the memo has already been provided to the complainant, and the contents of the memo was discussed at the scheduled school committee meeting. That's, that's all I have on that. And I'll turn it over to you, if you have anything for FYI.
The one, the one thing I just wanted to bring to your attention is the annual case collaborative, their annual, their annual report, along with the financial statements from their annual audit. And I would expect that the Edco Collaborative's annual report will be, will receive that over the course of the next few weeks, and we'll provide that to you as well.
So that concludes our evening. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Sorry, who, who moved? Katie moved and Mary seconded. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions.